Good evening, everyone. I, Council President Walsh, call the June 5th City Council Meeting to order. As a reminder, we continue to have a remote aspect to our meetings. Both staff and members of the public may be participating in tonight's meeting remotely via WebEx. Mayor Polly is absent tonight, so I'll be serving as Mayor Pro Tem. Councilmember Ray has an excused absence, and Councilmember De Michelle up there on the screen is under the weather and will be attending virtually. We have several items on our agenda tonight. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a note about a former mayor. We have two special business items: Juneteenth Day Proclamation and an LGBTQIA+ Pride Month Proclamation. We will be recognizing a community member. And then we've got audience comments. I know we have a lot of people in the room interested in making audience comments. We would love to hear from you. After that point, we will go into our regular business. And please feel free, you don't need to stay. We've got a lot to do after that. But I just wanted to let you know we will have a consent calendar item. And then on our regular business, we've got a discussion on behavioral health positions and police, court, and city hall planning future options. So with that, we will start the evening with Pledge of Allegiance. I welcome you to join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, for God, indivisible, liberty, and justice.
Thank you. And now, I want to just take a moment out of our regular agenda. We heard that former Issaquah mayor Keith M. Hanson died on May 28th at age 94. Hanson served as mayor from 1970 to 1974. He lived in Issaquah for most of his life, spending the last two years with family in Bellevue. Mayor Hanson was quoted in a 2018 article about his service as mayor that working on ordinances that beautified the town and set standards for landscaping was his greatest achievement. He looked at landscaping ordinances from other cities, broke them down, and built them back up in a way that fit the city. So city flags will be at half-mast through Wednesday, June 7th, in his honor. And I'd like to take a moment just to recognize his passing with a moment of silence. The next item on business is a special business. We will be providing two proclamations, so I'm going to move down to the lectern and invite people up for those proclamations. So the first prison proclamation is ID 1378, the Juneteenth Day Proclamation. It's being received by Lynn Verner from the Issaquah Highlands Community Fund. You would join me down here? Thank you. I'm going to make the proclamation, and then I'll give you a moment to speak as well. Whereas Juneteenth recognizes and commemorates the day of June 19th, 1865, when enslaved African-Americans in Texas were informed by Mayor General Gordon Granger that they were free, ending 246 years of chattel slavery. And whereas on June 19th, 1866, one year after Mayor Granger's announcement, the freed African-American men and women in the state of Texas held the first Juneteenth, or African-American Independence Day, celebration. And Juneteenth celebrations would later spread to all corners of the country. And whereas we acknowledge the evils of slavery and its aftermath. And whereas we acknowledge African-American contributions and achievements within this community, both past and present. And whereas during this Juneteenth event, we celebrate our African-American community members. And whereas we commit to working together toward equity for all in expanding economic, educational, and career opportunities for everyone in our community. Now therefore, I, Lindsey Walsh, on behalf of Mayor Mary Lou Polly of the city of Issaquah, do hereby proclaim June 19th, 2023, to be Juneteenth Day in the city of Issaquah. And I invite the community to join me in the celebration and commitment to eliminating prejudice everywhere. Thank you. Would you like to make some comments?
I would. Thank you, Council President Walsh. I want to thank everyone for helping us, especially those of you there. I want to thank you for helping us with the Issaquah Highlands' third celebration of Juneteenth. This award-winning, global grub-and groove event was actually planned, it began on the same day as the national holiday, June 16th, 2021. And that's just a beautiful significance for us. I also want you to know that Juneteenth is a day to reflect on both bondage and freedom, the good and the bad. It's a day of both pain and purpose. It is an equal measure of remembrance of both the long, hard night of slavery, but also the celebration of the promise of a brighter morning to come. On Juneteenth, we remember our extraordinary capacity to heal, to hope, and to emerge from our worst moments as a stronger, freer, better nation. We grow stronger as a country and community when we honestly confront our past injustices. We really have to do that, including the profound suffering and injustice wrought by slavery. Because to heal, we have to remember. But when we remember, we grow stronger together. And so we really thank the city for acknowledging this moment. And I want to invite all of you this coming Friday, June 16th, 2023, to once again celebrate Juneteenth with us. Thank you so much.
Hold this up, and then while we would like to take a picture, here we can step over a little bit. Okay, and for the Pride Proclamation, I'm not sure I saw Kaylee here. Fantastic, okay. If you would join me from the Garage, and then also Georgia Beauclair, Kevin, and Naomi Ortman from Eastside Pride, if you would all join me up here to receive the proclamation. I didn't catch your name. Okay, fantastic. No, come on up. Squeeze on in.
Michelle squeeze in.
We're all here together. We appreciate it. So whereas the month of June was designated Pride Month to commemorate the Stonewall Riots, which occurred in June of 1969 and are generally recognized as the catalyst of the LGBTQIA+ rights movement. And whereas city council and staff have committed to make Issaquah an inclusive and welcoming community for all, including the LGBTQIA+ community. And whereas all members of the Issaquah community, including those who are lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, questioning, intersex, and asexual, have the right to feel safe, not to be discriminated against, and to live without the threat of violence or harassment. And whereas supporting Issaquah's LGBTQIA+ community also aligns with the city's strategic plan, guiding principles of both people and equity. And whereas the LGBTQIA+ community has made great strides, however, work remains in order to fully, to achieve full equality, inclusion, and acceptance. Whereas Issaquah is strengthened by and thrives upon the rich diversity of ethnic, cultural, racial, gender, and sexual identities of its residents, all of which contribute to the vibrant character of our city. Now therefore, I, Lindsey Walsh, on behalf of Mayor Mary Lou Polly of the city of Issaquah, do hereby proclaim the month of June to be LGBTQIA+ Pride Month in the city of Issaquah. And I invite the community to join me in celebrating the great diversity of our city, our commitment to eliminating prejudice everywhere it exists, respecting the rights of all people, and recognizing the contributions and achievements of the LGBTQIA+ community. When you have anyone else speak? Come on up.
Thank you very much. Hello, my name is Kevin Ortman. Mayor Polly, members of the city council, thank you very much for letting me speak today. As a representative of P-Flag Bellevue Eastside, as a representative of Eastside Pride, as a resident of Issaquah, and as a proud father of an amazing 20-year-old transgender son, I do thank you for declaring this proclamation that you've given today, recognizing and celebrating the contributions of the LGBTQIA+ community, and also for declaring Issaquah a city and a community that recognizes individuals, that celebrates our own unique differences, that aspires to eliminate prejudice, and to provide a safe community for all of its peoples. To members of the LGBTQIA+ community, you are valid, you are loved, and you have a home in Issaquah. Now, I'll go off script for just a moment to state that we made the decision to move to Issaquah in 2019 from a Midwestern state. We made that very much in part due to the inclusivity of the community that we saw here. We have a home in Issaquah, and we truly appreciate the community, the love and support that we've received, and everyone here. There are all kinds of events that are happening during the month of June that you have declared. I encourage each and every one of you, either present today or watching at home, to participate in those events, show your love and support for the community. Thank you very much for having us today.
I'm Tiana Perry. I'm the program manager with The Garage. On Saturday, June 24th, from noon to 3:00, The Garage is holding a Pride event on the Issaquah Community Center lawn. That is a teen-presented Pride event, but for the community, and I would love to invite you all to join and celebrate with us. Thank you.
I am the secretary of Issaquah High School's Saga Department, which is the Sexuality and Gender Alliance Club. I have had a great year. I'm a senior here, but I've also, I've lived here for five years, and I have felt so safe in this community, and I'd like to thank you all.
So we've got two. I think we've got one proclamation for The Garage, and then one proclamation for the Pride, Eastside Pride. So if you would go together, I guess, so that I will... Okay, I'm gonna head back up. I just love things like that. Um, so just before we get into audience comments, city administrator, I think you wanted to recognize a member of the community?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council. Good evening. Issaquah is very fortunate this year to be participating in a pilot program of the International City County Management Association, known as the Bob Turner Fellowship Program. The fellowship is funded in memory of Bob Turner, who was the city manager of Boulder, Colorado. It is designed to involve undergraduates and high school students in local government. And Issaquah is one of three communities in the United States this summer, participating along with Boulder, Colorado, and State College, Pennsylvania. And I'm happy to introduce Amenah Chavez Reyes. Would you come up to the podium for a second? Amenah is going to be a senior next year at Skyline High School. She is involved in a whole variety of things, but varsity cheerleading, sideline, and competitive athletics are the main things that she lists. And she'll be with us through the first part of August. She'll be coming to some council meetings, working on some projects, hopefully getting a better understanding of what we do in local government. And she'll be paid, and we are receiving funding for her salary from ICMA, through the funding from an endowment that was created this fellowship. So welcome to the city council, and happy to have you say a couple of words.
Yeah, thank you so much for having me. I'm so excited to be here. I'm hoping to see you all pretty frequently, as often as I can. And yeah, it's just really important to me to get a better understanding of like my community and how I can like bring awareness, like, you know, my friends and family who all live here.
Welcome.
So very much to be thankful for in our community. And the next piece to be thankful for is audience comments, and the people who want to engage with the city council and let us know their opinion. So members, the public may address council at this time, in person or virtually. Those who signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first. If you're joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand or send the host a chat message. If you're on the phone, you're going to press star 3. If you've joined by computer or smartphone, you can look for the hand icon. If you're in the room and did not sign up, I will ask for other speakers before closing this portion of the meeting. So clerk, can you let me know who is the, I guess we already have people signed up, so I'll just go on to the next portion, and then we'll start calling people. So for those making comments, please direct comments to the whole council and not to individuals. While this is not a question-and-answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. When recognized, please unmute your microphone for virtual attendees, or step up to the lectern. If the red light is on, that means we can hear you over the microphone. If it isn't, you can press the button down at the bottom of it. Please state your name, address, and relationship to the city. Speak clearly and pause frequently. Limit your comments to five minutes. If you're attending virtually and do not respond after your name or phone number is called, or if your connection is lost unexpectedly, the meeting will need to proceed. You're encouraged to rejoin the meeting if able. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. Citizen comments, written and verbal, are an important aspect of the public process. The city takes comments seriously, and we thank you for taking the time to address us. So we're gonna call everybody up in order. City clerk, who do we have signed up first?
Sure, we have eight individuals signed up to speak tonight. The first is Norb Ziegler.
Hey.
Always good to be first. City council members, my name is Norb Ziegler, and my address is 4617 225th Avenue Southeast. And as a resident of Sammamish, I've actually been involved in volunteering in Issaquah for many years. Thirteen years at the food bank, and 15 years at the Issaquah salmon hatchery. This evening, I'm speaking as a community meals volunteer, and I've been involved in that program for the last three years. And I'm here to speak in opposition of the parking proposal that eliminates all of the parking spots behind community hall for community meals volunteers. And this is a critical element for us. The volunteers for the community meals program need parking spots that are easily accessible to that back door to bring in food, to bring in supplies, and to actually serve the meals. As far as bringing in food, we carry in crockpots and trays of desserts, and pans of lasagna, bottled drinks, and other food that's difficult to carry a long distance. Occasionally, we also bring in supplies, boxes of carryout materials, napkins, and that kind of thing. And it takes about six volunteers to actually run one of these, one of these meals. It takes about three to four people to actually prepare the food and serve it. It takes two to three people to clean up and wash dishes and close down the facility. We normally serve about 40 meals, and it takes about three hours end to end. So the bottom line is, we need, in my estimation, six parking spots that are accessible to that back door of the community hall. And anything less than that would provide, would present quite a difficulty for us. So I'm hoping that we can find an alternative solution to that which has been proposed. And one other thing, and this is important to me, the proposed fence also may be sending a message to the community that the area may not be safe. Think about the residents along Sunset, and the businesses along Sunset. Are they to believe that they are less safe now because of this fence that's being constructed for parking? And what about the preschool that's right down the street? Are the teachers safe? Are the children safe? And the users of the park, in the senior center? Same question. It's another reason to eliminate the fence. So this evening, I am strongly urging the city council to find an alternative solution to what has been proposed. I'm sure there are many, and I'm hoping we can work together to do that. And thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. And city clerk?
Next is Liz Tiedeman.
Hello, my name is Liz Tiedeman. I live on Newport Way. I moved to Issaquah in 2017, after about 28 years in Bellevue. And I moved here because it is such a kind community. I had gotten familiar with it because my parents spent the last eight years of their lives here. I fell in love with it. I have a lot of friends here. I moved here. And with those friends, I do some of the provisioning of community meals. But the particular thing I would like to bring to your attention is the decision-making process. I understand that the city council has already approved and budgeted the construction of a fence and a control access system for the police department. I have watched more than once the video of the February 22nd meeting of the City Council Committee on Services, Safety, and Parks. And I found the content of that meeting to not be consistent with what I read in the message from the mayor in the 2022 budget, in which she wrote that the city, and I imagine she was speaking mostly for herself, would be analyzing decisions to ensure that they do not have unintended adverse consequences on marginalized groups. And in addition, right below that, and this is on page 14 of the 2022 budget, the focus on data-driven decision-making. And at the February 22nd meeting, there was no data presented that would indicate a need for a fence. Now maybe such data was presented back in 2021, before such fence was entered into the 2022 budget. Another time, I'll comment about how difficult it is to find public records, you know, minutes from before 2022. But I would like to make my final comment, which is, I think the decision-making process was flawed, and so I hope that this, this will be revisited. I said that was going to be my final comment, but I must make one more. During that February 22nd meeting, the person who works for the city, who was making the presentation about this project, about five minutes into the meeting said, gave some anecdotes about why this fence is needed. Not data, anecdotes. One of the anecdotes was, we're one of the few police departments without secured parking. Well, what does a few mean? And how many were looked at? There's no data in that, in that statement. Another anecdote, sometimes they find people between patrol cars. No data. How many times? How big a problem is this? And finally, and I quote, "We have dispatchers and other people being approached by unsavory characters." Now I'd like to know the difference between people and unsavory characters. None of the city council members at the February 22nd meeting asked, "What do you mean by unsavory characters?" So I wonder if this is a city that now has adopted some sense of distinction between people and unsavory characters. So thank you for hearing my comments, and like others, I hope that some other plan will be made other than a fence that would limit my access to the back door of the hall. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And do we have a next person signed up?
Yes, the next person signed up is a virtual attendee, Arden Rundell. Arden, I'm going to make you a panelist now, so you should have the option to unmute and can also choose to turn your video on. You have the floor. Arden, can you hear us? Can you try speaking?
Let me just send... Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, fantastic. You are our next speaker. So you are live. If you want to turn on your video, you can, and you can make your public comment.
Actually, I sent my comment in the chat.
Arden, this is the clerk. I'm not, the council members are unable to see your chat message, so if, if you would be willing to read that message during your comment time, I'm also willing to read it if you'd prefer.
You cannot see my chat message? It was sent to Issaquah Clerk's office?
Yes, Arden, I can see your chat message, but the council members here in the room are not able to view the chat.
Well, basically, I've been serving on with the Issaquah group, lunch group, for about three years now, and I know that the Lord takes it very seriously. And I think that if you want His supernatural favor and protection over your equipment, your first responders, your city, you're going to need to continue to help us with our program.
Okay, thank you for your comment there. Appreciate that. And do we have anybody else signed up, clerk? I know you've got a lot to manage between the list, the microphone muting, the timer. We appreciate it.
Yes, no, no problem. Marilyn and/or Steve Ottinger?
My name is Marilyn Ottinger. My husband Steve and I moved to Issaquah in 1986, where we raised our five children. In 2007, since 2007, I coordinated a free lunch. In 2008, at the request of an unsheltered guest named James, I began coordinating weekend meals, because according to James, people are hungry on the weekends. I am proud to live in a city that provides a free meal where all are welcome every day of the week. After a couple weeks of absorbing the news about proposed fencing surrounding the parking lots of the police and fire stations, I like to fill in a bit of the bigger story surrounding these meals in the spirit of what poet Mary Oliver calls, "Instructions for Living A Life." Pay attention, be astonished, tell the story. I'd like to tell you about one of the gentlemen I got to know early in our lunches named David Haggard. I learned that a tent on Tiger Mountain was where David called home. I often hiked the mini-trails on Tiger Mountain, so our paths often crossed. David was a docent at both the Issaquah Fish Hatchery and the Seattle Aquarium. He gave a group of us a behind-the-scenes tour. It was amazing, in his, I was amazed at his ability to identify fish and sea creatures and share the details about their habits and habitat. Just prior to the pandemic, we noticed that David was losing weight. He was also having trouble getting up off the ground, out of his tent. My friend Jan and I accompanied him through the healthcare system. He was admitted to Providence Marion Wood to help him regain his strength. Since COVID restrictions were in place, Jan and I only had window business. As with so many, this kind of isolation was very... David's health continued to decline, and plans were made for him to move into an adult family home in August. David said, "I don't want to leave." The Friday before the planned move, David suffered a stroke and was rushed to the emergency room at Swedish, where he was put on life support. Jan and I were allowed to visit David and send it, send him off with gratitude for the so many ways that he blessed us. David got his wish, not... Following David's death, I learned from the medical examiner that he was the youngest of six children. I spoke with his sister Julia, who lives in Oregon. She had been out of touch with her brother for decades and expressed an... and expressed an interest in coming to Issaquah for a celebration of David's life. I called Flinttoff's, and they graciously offered their cremation services at Nob. We gathered to celebrate David's life on what would have been his 64th birthday at the outdoor shelter at the Lake Tradition Trail. Fifteen of his family members from Oregon and eastern Washington joined us to tell stories and remember David's life. We scattered his ashes near his outdoor. What a privilege to accompany this. This is one of the many stories that shed light on the reality that our meals are an important component to maintaining a healthy community for all. Over the years of weekly lunches, our guests, like David, have become part of our extended. The proposed fencing would cut us off from delivering food through the kitchen door and will effectively end our meals and our community out. These meals are provided by volunteers. Most, like me, are senior citizens. I've been organizing the volunteers, and I can assure you this will end our program if we are not allowed access to the two drop-off parking spots behind. I'm not sure what problem a fence solves, but I ask you to think about the many people in our community who come to the hall for food and hospitality, like David Ray, and those who have made this labor of love happen for 16 years. Please think about them as you decide how to move.
Well, if you'd like, considering that you're two people, I can restart the clock here.
I just need about three. As Marilyn said, I'm Steve Ottinger. We've lived in Issaquah since 1986. Actually, it was unincorporated King County, out by Timberlake Park when we moved in. And I must admit that every aspect of services has improved dramatically since we've been part of Issaquah. And I think everyone involved with it, all of you, deserve our thanks and commendation for what you've done. But I heard that the fence was approved of the Capitol project that we've heard Liz talk about. And it was addressed issues of vandalism, auto theft of police and personal vehicles, as well as safety concerns of staff. I also heard that secured parking is a best practice. But like Liz, I wonder what is the best practice of evaluating and approving a project like this? Hopefully, there's a written problem definition statement with data that defines the nature of the problem, the size of the problem, the frequency of vandalism, frequency of auto parts theft, the nature and frequency of staff safety concerns. Have there been confrontations? Have there been arrests? How many? What alternatives were considered? Fighting security cameras? What are the costs of the alternatives? Now, ring cameras are cheap. They work for most of us. And I'm sure the police department has cameras there to begin with. And of course, costs are beyond dollars. There's loss of aesthetics. There's loss of community access, as Marilyn pointed out. And there's also what NORB said. Is this idea that people and property aren't safe in Issaquah? Now, that hasn't been my experience since 1986. Hopefully, it's not your experience either. But if the analysis is done, boy, I would certainly like to see it. And I, for one, would fully support this project if there is a compelling analysis done on it. But I have to admit, when I hear the term "best practices" as a justification, it makes me suspect the analysis hasn't been done. A project should stand on its own by the analysis, irrespective of best practices. But I would like to thank you for your attention. And I guess as parting, I would have to say is that any auto park thief who targets a police station needs some type of remedial help. I mean, it's not a recommended best practice for the trade. Thank you.
Thank you both. Do we have anyone else signed up to speak?
Yes, we do. Ted Lucas?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ted Lucas. I'm a very happy member of this community. I live on 1205 Oakwood Place, right off of Newport Way. And I'm here to salute and support the mayor's Juneteenth proclamation that I believe you all sponsored as well. And to really thank you. We are members of the Baha'i community. The Baha'i faith so much believes in unity and diversity and oneness and the sustenance of this commitment. I really want to kind of thank you, Human Services Commission, Human Services Office, Monica, the Equity Board as well, all of you. And in doing that and expressing our appreciation, would like to share a small quote from the National Spiritual Assembly of the Baha'is of the United States to really stimulate and really forge our commitment, I think collectively, to race, unity, and justice. "We should never forget that the richness of our diversity and our founding ideals of liberty and justice attract the eyes of the world to us. They will be influenced by what we achieve or fail to achieve in this regard. It is not an exaggeration to say that the cause of world peace is linked to our success in resolving the issue of racial injustice. The oneness of humanity is the foundation of our future. Its realization is the inevitable."
It's working. Give us.
Hold on just a moment.
Oh, it just went back on. Please continue.
Okay. I'll say it again, because the foundation is our knowledge and our acknowledgement of the oneness of humanity as the inevitable next step. This achievement will mark the universal coming of age of the human race. How soon we achieve this and how easily will depend upon the commitment we demonstrate to this principle. We have come to a moment of great public awareness and rejection of injustice. Let us not lose this opportunity. Will we commit to the process of forming a more perfect union? Will we be guided by the better angels of our nature to choose the course of wisdom, of courage, and of unity? Will we choose to truly become that city upon a hill to serve as inspiration to all humanity? Let us then join hands with each other in commitment to the path of justice. Together, we can surely achieve this. Gratefully, the Baha'is of Issaquah.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry in advance if we're having any mic issues. I'm coming on and off as well. Do we have anyone else signed up to speak?
Yes, we have three more speakers. The next is Elizabeth Maupin.
Thank you, city council, for making time for public comment. My name is Elizabeth Maupin. I've lived in Issaquah for quite a long time. I'm a passionate advocate for having housing in Issaquah that's affordable to people here. And I'm here tonight to speak about the ways that we provide support for our neighbors who are struggling financially. I heard recently at the East Side Homelessness Advisory Committee that the local rents have gone up by 27% above, and that's way above the rate of inflation. And I heard from the Bellevue Dispute Resolution Center that they are being inundated by eviction cases, and these have increased tenfold in the recent months. Since the state legislature has not yet acted on rent stabilization to address this root cause of homelessness, it really is crucial that counties and cities like ours do what they can to deal with this impact, at least until the state acts. I support the use of the 0.1% tax for the AB 8625, the lease agreement with Motel 6, and AB 8628 for the additional behavioral health specialists to provide emergency services for this crisis that is only going to increase in the near future. But I also want you to consider the importance of our community meals. These meals are open to all, but they're particularly vital to our neighbors who don't have housing and those whose housing is costing them so much that they don't have much left for basic necessities like food. And so, like many before me, I beg you to look for an alternative to the proposed fence. There are two spaces back there that we use for unloading food. If we had to use one space at the front, that means many trips around to take the food through a group of people who have already assembled there. And if somebody else comes trying to get into that space, you practically have to go back up onto I-90 and around to make that loop again to see if there's space available. There's no place you can just go around the block. So it really does pose a problem not to have more than one spot to offload and not to have a spot that's close to the kitchen. Like they mentioned, there's a lot to carry. It's easy to get jostled trying to go from the front to the back. So I hope that you can come up with a really good elegant solution. It is a fence. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Elizabeth. And do we have anybody?
Yes, next we have Wes Howard Brook, Rock, I believe.
For Reagan. We appreciate it.
Hi, well, I'm Wes. That's Sue, in case you didn't figure that out. We've lived in Issaquah for 22 years. We have three adult children here and three grandchildren here. And we love living in Issaquah. I live just right down the street in Old Town. And are very happy here. I will not repeat everything that you heard from the other people. I affirm all the comments that people have made. I would like a slight issue with the comments of our friend Steve Ottinger, who said that there doesn't seem to be a safety problem in Issaquah. I think there is a safety problem in Issaquah for a particular segment of the population, and that's the poor. And the people are not safe from is the Issaquah police. They are the biggest threat to the safety of the poor is the Issaquah police. Every week at our lunch, almost every week, not every single week, but almost every week, I hear a story from somebody who's been unduly harassed or unjustly treated simply for being poor around here. A couple of examples. Our friend Kevin, who's, I don't know exactly how old he is. He's got white hair and he's balding. I'm guessing he's in his 60s, but I don't know. He obviously has physical limitations. He has mental health challenges. A member of our group who's present here tonight helped him out by buying him a van that he could sleep in. And the police constantly harassed him for sleeping in his van and moved him around from one place to another. He finally got a space at the Motel 6, but he had to run an errand. And he asked the person at the desk, "Well, I have a parking space when I get back." And she said, "Sure." And when he got back, all the spaces were full. And he said, "What am I supposed to do? I have this van. I need to park to stay here." And she said, "Well, everybody who's supposed to be here is here. So why don't you park in the handicap space?" And he did. And the police came around and gave him a $450 ticket for parking in the handicap space. I could multiply examples of this for hours. One of the particular practices that's most egregious that affects people at our lunch is a practice I don't even know if you know of, and it's marginally constitutional, called trespassing people. It's so egregious that two University of Washington sociologists wrote a book to decry it called Banished. The subtitle is "The New Science of Social Control in Urban America." And this procedure allows police to tell a citizen with no due process, no evidence whatsoever, simply on the will of the police officer, they are now banned from being in any physical area that the police officer designates. There's no appeal. There's no chance for hearing. And if you violate that order, then you've committed a crime by violating a police order. And it's routinely used against the poor to move them around and get them out of the way of the people who aren't the characters that refer to, that Liz referred to earlier, unsavory characters. One last thing I'd like to say. I know this is from before the time that any, I believe it's from before the time any of you were in the council, before Mary Lou was the mayor. But I come to this with a certain suspicion, because we spent another time coming to this council to fight for our lunch a number of years ago, when we were told the problem with the lunch was it failed to abide by state or county health regulations. We were suspicious at the time that that came out of nowhere, given the number of meals, both at the hall and elsewhere, where people served from home. But it was insisted that we could not serve meals from home because it violated the health requirement. So my suspicion led me to file a public records request. And that public records request, which I'd be glad to provide for you, and I've seen your own records, showed that members of the city staff were conspiring with members of the King County Health Department to lie to us and tell us that the reason that they were shutting down our lunches for health reasons, when in fact, the real reason was the city's fear of liability if somebody had fallen. So they deliberately told us a false story, knowing it was false. And we conferred to them on that. And then they backed off, and our lunch continued. So I seem a little upset today and a little suspicious of this reason given that suddenly we need to have best practice for a fence. That's the reason. I'm not accusing anybody of anything. I don't know you. I don't know your motivations. But I'm very suspicious. There are people in this town who don't like to see the poor, and they're calling on you to find some means indirectly to end our lunch. And I hope you won't do that.
Thank you. I mainly want to just affirm and agree with the comments that have been made by those folks who have been pouring their hearts, their hours, their hard work into being in relationship and providing for the needs of those in our community, who, many of them are not housed. And as Ellie was saying, you know, and many more of them are just barely hanging on. The example that Marilyn gave of David, we could all talk about so many individuals, where I believe our community is much richer. I believe it is definitely consonant with the beliefs and values that have been articulated by the city. For instance, that we heard, you know, the proclamations emerge from this evening, that we honor and include all people, that we welcome diversity, that we preserve the dignity of each person, and we don't put them in categories to be denounced and excluded and violated against. And I hope and trust that we're all on the same page with that. When we moved to Issaquah, well, shortly, we had lived here a while, but we were so pleased and excited to see on the library a "Welcome Tent City" banner. Over the years, many stories to go along with that, but Fred Butler ended up handing the key to us so that people would not have to eat meals in the midst of summer heat that we were doing outside. Marilyn was leading that outside the food bank. So that's how the community hall came to be used by our group. Because at least as purported at that time, there was a common spirit here, where we protect and we provide for everyone. I have been proud to live in Issaquah because of that spirit and that commitment put into action. I would also like, and as a number of people have been saying, you know, we've been doing this a long time. Other people much more than I have. We are just those who've gathered a group who do this. But, yeah, these folks are getting really old. We're talking about, you know, those crock pots full of stuff, trying to stumble. Even a. a block. That's, it's just, you know, most of the people in their 20s and 30s, no problem. That's not the case. And these are people who've poured their lives into this. This is a critical dimension of this meal provision continuing. And it's not just a food line. It's shared communion, where people sit together and eat together and come to know and care about one another. And I do believe that that is the spirit of Issaquah, that we want to continue to perpetuate and to put concretely into action. One final word on the best practices, which Steve was saying a lot of the things I was going to say. Thank you, Steve. But I think we need to be so careful about throwing around the term "best practices." I'm a former psychologist, love that term when it's used appropriately. It can be very illuminating, practical, concrete, and can shape a plan of action. If it's not data-based, if it's based on anecdotes, if it is not based on how it affects the least of those among us, is that the kind of best practice that we want to implement? Property and protection and fear-based responses, over honoring people who have provided a communal meal, and honoring people who are struggling and will be changed by relationship and accompaniment and not exclusion? So best practices has to be defined by data, has to be followed by data, has to be clear, best practice in regard to what problem, from whose perspective, and then how will that be actualized or not through a plan of action? That's best practices. And I would encourage you to follow those and trust that you will. Thank you.
Thank you both.
Do we have anybody else signed up? No one else has signed up, and I'm just going to check in. I don't see any virtual hands from our virtual audience.
Well, I, yes, I was just going to welcome. We would love to hear from anyone else. If you'd like to go ahead and step up to the podium, and then anyone else after that, I will also call for other speakers. Thank you.
I'm Mary Anifer. We moved to Tiger Mountain in '93 and raised our both boys. I've worked as a nurse in neonatal with lots of diverse people. In the last 20 years, I've substituted in the Issaquah School District and worked with many diverse students tutoring. I represent 12 people from Mearmont and Tiger Mountain that have done these meals for the last five years. And during this time, we've gotten to know the people well. One of the women who works at the Dollar Store, who doesn't like the Dollar Store, came in so happy that she found an apartment. Another lady, she always talks about how she's allergic to cucumbers, and I made a salad with no cucumbers, and she was just delighted. Recently, I signed up at the Senior Center. I'm really a senior. And a lot of the people from the Senior Center come to our meals. They really appreciate it. They're just lovely people that come, and I appreciated everybody's remarks. They've really made me think, and that's why I'm here. And I so appreciate that you're considering a compromise, because it just shows that you're really listening to us. And the very last thing I'd like to say is we are a tech community, and a fence, it just sounds archaic. I mean, the points people made about the fence, it just really hit home. And I just really wanted to reiterate that. I have friends that moved from Tiger right into that neighborhood, and it's like, how would you feel if you lived near that fence? I mean, how safe do you feel? It's very thought-provoking, and I am so glad that you're reconsidering this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else out in the audience? Come on up. Appreciate it.
My name is Corey Christensen, longtime member of the community, Squawk Mountain resident. My topic was the Eck House, but I first wanted to voice support for all of my fellow community members. I appreciate it and the hard work they do. Yeah, I'm sorry. I think about it, and it's just an important thing, and we're really lucky to have people like this. Ah, excuse me. As far as the Eck House, I first wanted to call out some of the comment that was made by you last time that I appreciated, especially Counselor Hunt bringing up the cost of things, because I think that's important. One of the things about the Eck House is that it has so much more as a future, a future as far as the arts community, tourism, economic vitality, all of those different things, because it's a springboard for the downtown association, Chamber of Commerce, and so on, for events, smaller events that might be on Rainier rather than on Front Street. And in the Confluence Park, it's actually been restricted for passive recreation, except for the Eck House. And Eck House is part of Phase 1 of the park, which has not been completed, but is the one part that is actually approved for active recreation, and it makes sense as far as a connective thing for all of these events. And so it's something that shouldn't be locked up. It should be something that we really use and use by lots of different types of people, because sometimes when we look at our facilities, there's the cost, but then there's also how much use we get out of them. I think that since our last meeting, we had a park board meeting. The park board was talking about very similar things as the council, also asking similar questions. Some of the answers also were still similar, which is not, which can be good or bad, and I guess I'm sort of in the, you know, trying to stay in the mode of the glass is half full. For me, what I think is lacking is enough commitment for the Eck House. And we've had this going on for 10 or 15 years, and I have actually two asks. They're pretty easy asks. The first is, I think the King County Historical Preservation people need to come to the Safety, excuse me, Services, Safety and Parks Committee and talk about a couple of topics. One is what they mean by preservation, and I think the Parks Department and the architects are on a pretty good job on that. But then it's also the grant funding, because I don't think the Parks Department is as on the right track for that, because there's the question of, do you landmark the house first or after? And I think that that question could be answered by having the preservation people come and talk to us all. And the, and one reason for that is that if the Parks Department is wrong, then we're going to be coming, asking council for money to complete this. Whereas if it's the other way around, which I believe is true, there's grant funding to do almost the entirety of the house. Now, it's probably over a five-year period. It's not, it's not going to be instantaneous, but it's there. The second part comes to the landmarking, and the Parks Department has made a commitment to landmark the house. The only thing is, they've made the commitment after they've done all the work. And that's a little bit backwards, but then again, okay, fine, for this moment, we're back to the preservation people and getting a more public view of that. So my ask for that is that the process for landmarking is you collect the information about the house and the people. We've already done that, or I should say, the Historical History Museum has. The next is to do a report that brings that together, and that's done by hiring a consultant, and that costs about $6,000 and takes three or four months. The next step is then taking that report to the Landmarking Commission. And so what I'd like to ask you to do is to ask the Issaquah History Museums to start the process on landmarking the house, just the report, which would then get, which takes the four or five months. In four or five months, we would have the report done. Then the next step is going to the Landmarking Commission. This wouldn't affect anything that's being done right now. The history people are the ones that have the material, and this would at least get the project going in parallel. And if it does turn out that the landmarking needs to be done first, then we'd be set moving forward, and it also would get us a little more commitment. And we also have a great resource, because we now have Paul Winterstein as our lead, and we can leverage that into a, something great. Anyway, thank you, and I appreciate all these people again. Thank you.
Thank you, Corey. Do we have anyone else who'd like to speak tonight? Come on up. Appreciate it.
Hello, my name is Carson. I'm an occasional volunteer, an occasional diner at the community meal that's been discussed that the fence would impact. I know I am not willing to take over doing it on behalf of the current volunteers, so I don't presume to tell them how to do it. They say no offense. I believe no offense. I hope the council agrees. Thanks.
Thank you for taking a moment with us. Anybody else? Come on up.
I live on Dogwood Street. I'm also part of this great group, and I don't like public speaking. Just want to make known that I'm here to support all the arguments I've got, and I couldn't have said it better. But I spend a lot of time in Germany, come back, I hear this. I'm shocked this is happening in my village. I live on Dogwood Street. We are gone for months at a time. Nobody broke into our car ever, and now I come here with a bike, and I was looking for bike wreck, because I feel I cannot leave my bike just locked by itself. I had to lock it to a signpost there, because if the police station has to be fenced in, what about my personal stuff here and there? That's scary, besides all the other stuff they said. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, I'm just going to take a moment, say thank you, everyone, for coming out and speaking to us. We really, truly, I mean, honestly, oftentimes, this is empty, and we're so lonely. So we really, really do appreciate and take into account everything that we have heard. We heard from people in support of behavioral health coordinators, talking about the Eck House. We heard support for the Juneteenth proclamation. We heard about a dozen, I would count, community members who are here speaking about the community meals program and the access for the fence. So just very, very much appreciate hearing from the community on that. Just as a reminder, if anybody has any other thoughts they want to share with us, you can always write in to citycouncil@issaquahwa.gov. And do we have any comment? Yep. Oh, do we have anyone who'd like to make a other statement?
I was.
So if you'll give us a moment, unfortunately, we don't do a question and answer, but I think we have something in order to kind of address some of those concerns, because we heard you guys were coming, and we want to make sure you're heard. So, Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. I would like to move to suspend the rules so that I can address the public comments regarding Community Hall at this time.
Do you have a second? Fantastic. Okay, so are there any objections to suspending the rules to allow Councilmember Hunt to address the public comments regarding City Hall? No objections. Okay, Councilmember Hunt, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President Walsh. So I wanted to make sure that we did have an opportunity to discuss and get some more information about Community Hall. It's not an item that is on our agenda tonight, and so firstly, as Council President Walsh said, thank you to everybody who did come out and who also sent us emails and reached out regarding your concerns and for taking the time to speak to us this evening directly. Thank you also for your dedication as volunteers to ensure that our community members have food to eat and a hot meal. It is very appreciated. So I wanted to have a question for our administration, who is working with the community on this item, so that we could have a little bit more information about where we are on this topic. So specifically, I think it would be great to hear from Director Monahan about what sort of solutions are being brainstormed and considered, how those conversations are going with our community members that are volunteering to make sure that our community has these hot meals, and what sort of solutions are being considered, and next steps. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hunt, members of the city council. My name's Autumn Monahan. I'm the Administrative Services Director, and my department includes facilities, so all the city buildings. I also want to take a moment to recognize the volunteers that are in this room and many of the others I've met who volunteer at Community Hall. Thank you so much for all that you do to serve our community. So as background on this project, this project will build a security fence adjacent to the police station and behind Community Hall, as well as Fire Station 71. And it will be used for parking for police staff. That includes police officers, detectives, a lot of our support staff, so police dispatchers and firefighters, so a lot of the first responders in Issaquah. Several volunteer groups also use community halls, we've heard tonight, but for a variety of reasons. One of them is several different meals programs, but there's other uses as well. So the facilities team, along with the human services team, met with representatives from each of these groups recently, and we heard about the access concerns. So now we're working to brainstorm some solutions, meeting with volunteers and brainstorming solutions, meeting with staff from many different departments, also looking at what options we might be able to consider that would both support the safety of our first responders and this important program, several programs at Community Hall. So we still have time. This project is not under construction yet. We are still in very much the design phase. So we, our plan right now is to continue some of those brainstorms and then collectively bring that group back together to talk through options. So that was our next steps. I'm here to answer any questions.
Autumn, could you talk a little bit about what that timeline might look like, just to give a sense of when some of those next conversations would happen?
Sure. You know, I, right now, we were assessing a few different options, just for viability, number one, with design. So, you know, I would anticipate that will take several weeks. At that point, I think then we'll meet back with some of the community groups. So I would say within a few weeks.
And did you have anything else, Councilmember Hunt?
No, that was my questions. Thank you.
Okay. And I will just say to the community members, we don't get an opportunity at this point in the meeting to have back and forth, but please do email us, call us, right into Autumn. We want to hear from it, and we want to make sure that we are addressing all the needs. So, thank you very much. We are going to move on to the next item on our agenda. You don't have to stay with us. We have several hours worth of meeting left to go, so we appreciate. The next item of business is our consent calendar, and I have remarks on two of tonight's consent calendar items from the mayor. The first is AB 8637, the King County Opioid Abatement Council. In 2022, the state of Washington settled large-scale litigation against various parties involved in the manufacture and distribution of prescription opioids. $215 million of the overall $518 million settlement was earmarked for eligible Washington cities and counties that opted to join in on the settlement. The city chose to participate in the settlement, with the city council authorizing execution of the ONE Washington MOU, Memorandum of Understanding, last spring. Under the ONE Washington MOU, settlement funds can only be used for approved purposes, such as treatment for opioid use disorder and support for people in treatment and recovery. The ONE Washington MOU also requires that recipients form an opioid abatement councils prior to the distribution of any of the settlement funds. The King County Regional Agreement for the Opioid Abatement Council on tonight's agenda establishes the King County Regional Opioid Abatement Council, OAC, to include King County and a number of jurisdictions within King County, including the city of Issaquah. The purpose of the OAC is to oversee allocation and distribution of settlement funds, to review expenditures for compliance with the ONE Washington MOU, and to resolve any disputes that arise among the participants. King County will serve as administrator of the OAC, with each party contributing 10% of its annual settlement allocation to pay for its share of administrative costs. And then the next note is on AB 8625, the lease agreement with Motel 6 for emergency housing. The emergency housing pilot program, in collaboration with Motel 6, is moving forward, and we are excited to see it launch in the upcoming month. The three limited-term positions that were approved by city council last month have been filled, with anticipated start date for new staff being June 20. The lease agreement with Motel 6, AB 8625, is on tonight's consent calendar, and if approved, it is scheduled to begin July 1. The lease consists of 12 rooms to temporarily house Issaquah residents who are homeless, one motel room to be utilized as a program office or resource room, 10 double occupancy motel rooms to be utilized by the participants of the program, and one and one motel room to be utilized as an emergency standby room. Between now and July, staff are working on creating processes and procedures for the new program and begin referring candidates to the program. Other operational details, including meals, access to basic needs, connections to employment, and other resources are being developed. The collaboration with Motel 6 staff has been very positive and supportive. Last week, facilities and IT staff took a tour of the motel to begin setting up the office space for staff. Our hope is to have the first participants enrolled in the program by July 15. Okay. So, before I move on to the adoption, are there any committee chairs who would like to report on any of the consent calendar items? I'll give you a moment to look over those items that are on the list tonight, see if there is anything. I don't remember if there were. Nothing there? Okay. So, the consent calendar was distributed council in advance. If authorized, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
Yes.
And I also did. I'm the second. Does any council member desire to remove any items from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion?
Yes, I move to approve the consent calendar as presented in tonight's packet.
Second.
Okay. The motion to approve the consent calendar as presented has been moved and seconded. Are there any council discussion? Hearing none, the motion before council is to approve the consent calendar as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That passes unanimously. Okay. We are now on to our regular business. So, first item up is AB 8628, Behavioral Health Positions. We're being asked to authorize funding. The item was last before council at the April 24, 2023 City Council Committee of the Hall, and I'd like to invite Human Services Manager Monica Negrilla to present this item. Thank you, Monica.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, all. This is Monica Negrilla. Thanks so much for having us here tonight. And so, with that, tonight, we are seeking your authorization to approve funding for two behavioral health positions, coordinator position and the supervisory position that would provide direct services as well as supervision, utilizing affordable, affordable housing sales tax revenue funds. With that, if approved by a City Council, we hope that the position will be brought back on June 26, part of the Human Resources Amendment for the salary ordinance. Next, I want to give you a little bit of background on how the behavioral health program developed over the past couple of years. Starting in 2021, with City Council approval, part of the budget process for 2021, was creating a behavioral health program. And we started with one full-time position. At that time, we hired Amir Shabana as the first behavioral health program coordinator. He started in April, so he just passed his two-year anniversary recently. Still, at the same time, in a similar timeline, we were already working with one of our local community partners for doing some homeless outreach with the Isakua Food and Clothing Bank. And at that time, to leverage resources, we decided and we transitioned that homeless outreach program to the city. So, we created a full-time position operated by the city. So, just a little bit a year ago, in June, we hired Kaylin Wood as the second behavioral health coordinator. And so, we combined the two programs, the homeless outreach and the behavioral health program coordinator, the position, the program, to really leverage the resources that we had in staffing, but also to allow us to provide a six- or seven-day staff coverage. And so, also in 2022 and 2023 now, more recently, I want to highlight that as we began being successful with transitioning unhoused community members into housing, we also started providing housing stability services for those who were housed. And I want to highlight that because we did not realize at that time how big of a lift that was for staff. You all know how difficult it is to find housing in the community. I'm here to tell you that it's that much harder to actually help someone maintain housing and make sure that they don't fall back into homelessness. So, some of the work that we did in the last couple of years, really, not only trying to serve the needs of the community and really acquiring quite a bit of higher caseloads, like currently, we have about 131 people that we are serving or they are waiting to be served, but also the intensity of services that we provide, especially for those who recently became housed from chronically being homeless for several years. It's really, really a huge lift for staff. Sometimes, one person requires 10, 15, 20 hours of support per week. So, that's a lot for pretty small staff. And so, that takes us to 2023. First, we brought the behavioral health coordinator position discussion to you, City Council, at the Committee of the Hall meeting in April. That was part of a broader conversation on affordable housing, but also the use of the affordable housing sales tax revenues. And so, based on the feedback that we received from you, we are here tonight to seek formal approval for the two new positions. On this slide, I'm very thankful for Ryan Smith from the Isakua Police Department. The crime analyst there was able to pull some data to show further the need that perhaps we anticipate having in the future based on some past information that she was able to gather. What you see on the screen, there are, for the past five years, the number of total calls that the Isakua Police Department received. And then, based on the number of total calls, Ryan was also able to pull the calls that are behavioral health-related. So, you see a pattern there. Anywhere between 15 and 18% of the calls are behavioral health-related. So, the number that you see on the screen, those are high numbers. I do want to note, though, that they are not, of course, unique numbers. Often, for the same individual, there are multiple people calling. And also, often, we have the same individual calling multiple times. However, still, it's, it still gives us a pretty good information and a good snapshot of the number of calls and the need that it's out there for behavioral health. So, next, summarizing what we are proposing for you here tonight for your consideration is two full-time behavioral health coordinator, full-time behavioral health positions, one supervisory position and one coordinator position. We hope that these two staff will help create a co-responder model with the police department. Currently, as a reminder, our staff primarily, our current staff primarily conduct follow-up, a follow-up model and the referral model, where the police officers respond to a call, and if the call is behavioral health-related, they will refer the person to our program. At times, whenever possible, our staff also respond, however, their time is limited currently. So, with the two new positions, we hope to create a co-responder model where the two new behavioral health coordinators will be, two new behavioral health staff will be stationed, actually, in the police department, working primarily on co-response. And if time permits, they can also provide follow-up. What we also hope and propose with the two new additions is that the staff who will be stationed and focused primarily in the police department and focused primarily on co-response will cover an afternoon, evening, and weekend shift. We learned in working with the police department that often crises happen in the evening and at night, and so the referral gets to us in the morning. However, when our staff need to assist community members with resource connection, those resources often happen in the morning, so during the day and during the week. So, we are hoping to have the co-response staff for evening and afternoon weekends and the follow-up staff remain for weekday and day coverage. And last but not least, for 2023, we hope to utilize about $200,000 for the remainder of the year for the two positions, using, again, affordable housing sales tax revenues. And our finance team is prepared to come to you in a few months as part of the biennium budget and discussion, the mid-biennium review, to further talk about the 2024 revenues and costs for the program. I already covered, I think, most of the information on this slide. This is, just provides a visual on how, part of the same team, we hope to have a co-response model that will then refer those community members who need further assistance to our referral and follow-up existing behavioral health staff. This is another visual, showing you our current and how the Human Services Division within the Parks and Community Services and how the organizational chart looks like right now with the proposed positions. In your Agenda Bill, in your Agenda Packet, you also have an organizational chart of the entire Parks and Community Services. We are just a division within, within the larger department. But just for the visual, we are focusing on the Human Services one right here. What you also see highlighted in gray are the two positions that we are seeking support for. So, the behavioral health supervisor and then a behavioral health coordinator. You also see, again, as the division grew in the last couple of years. Believe it or not, three years ago, this division was still staffed by just one staff. So, it's pretty impressive to see the change. You see the Human Services Coordinator position. Currently, Hannah Roberts oversees all the needs and Human Services strategic planning implementation, as well as the Human Services grants. Marisol Visser acts as the Community Court Case Manager, assisting those folks there, as well as other Human Services-related needs. And you also see on the right-hand side the brand-new emergency housing program. As we heard from you earlier, we were successfully able to hire the three new staff that are going to start in the next couple of weeks. So, excited about that. So, very, very grateful for all the opportunities that we have to serve the community. And so, with that, we did consider a 24/7 model. We also considered not proposing any new staff. Not proposing any new staff did not seem like the viable option as we see the needs and we hear from our police department that the needs are there. The 24/7 model was also, we felt like we don't quite have yet enough information to support that model. We would love to continue to work for the next six, 12 months or so to see how the two new behavioral health coordinators, the two new behavioral health physicians will impact in one way or the other, the new, the needs in the community. So, with that, the options for you tonight, we hope you would consider approving the funding for the two positions. You may, of course, make changes to our recommendations or direct us to return with a different proposal or take no action. Of course, our recommendation is to...
Just one moment. I believe there's only two more slides. Do you mind holding your question just a second? Okay, thanks.
Sorry, I'm like, keep going. Thank you. Okay, so, of course, our recommendation is to approve the funding for the two behavioral health positions, utilizing the House Bill 1590 revenues to create the co-responder behavioral health program. And in terms of timing and next steps, our Human Resources Department will return on June 26 with the revised salary ordinance for the brand-new classification for the supervisory position. And then, we will continue to work in the upcoming months with the police department on creating the processes in place for that and hiring. I kept the information a little bit, not an exact timelines here, just to allow us a little, we try to be conservative and allow us a little bit of time to also launch the Motel 6 project, so.
Okay, and that's the end of the presentation?
That's the end of the presentation.
Okay, fantastic. Questions? I will start with Councilmember Marts.
Thank you, Madam Council President. I don't know if this is a question for Monica or for our city administrator. What is our general thinking on opening supervisory positions? Because I noticed that your department would have 10 people under your leadership. And, you know, I have a big engineering organization, and I generally look for like eight to 12 individual contributors per manager. So, how do we decide when we need a supervisor? And how do we know if we're going to open two positions, whether we open two individual contributors or open a management position? What's our, how do we figure that out? Thanks.
Councilmember Marts, members of the council, the director of the department is here, and I think I'm going to let him answer that question. You know, as he's coming up here, I don't know that there is a rule of thumb that works in all instances. I think what you described is not unusual for what we would look at as well. But that was a question we considered prior to coming to you, and I'll let Jeff fill in the blanks from there.
That's great. Excellent question. Jeff Watling, Parks and Community Services Director. In this incident, and, you know, Monica certainly highlighted, as you look at the organization chart, the Human Services team has certainly grown, not only grown in size, but in specialization. So, often, what we look at is when you have a like body of behavioral specialist, health specialist team, that is now four, rather than having them all directly report to the manager, who are also asking to oversee other diverse human services programs, it's not so much just the staff number as the specialization or the skill or the work that that team is doing. And so, understanding, I think, as we really talk through this and realizing the need for both co-response specialization and coordinating with police, as Monica spelled out, as well as the real important work of follow-up and that referral piece, having a supervisor helping to lead both of those efforts within the behavioral specialist team felt really a high need for a supervisor.
Thank you. I really appreciate that answer.
Great. Do we have any other questions at this time? Not? Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. So, this is a process question. In the motion tonight, there is a, there's a motion to approve funding, and then there's also to direct the chief financial officer to add general fund expenditures in a future budget amendment, which, the first part of my question is, am I correct that we would then vote on that secondly, second, on that separate budget amendment? Assuming that's the case, I'm wondering if we can, for future, future expenditures like this, do that together? Because I think that makes for a better decision-making process. So, that's my question.
Councilmember Hunt, members of the council, thank you. We are moving in that direction. We will attempt to do that in the future. We agree that that's a more efficient way. As you know, there have been instances where the councils approve something programmatically, and then it comes back a few months later. So, we're working through that, and our hope is this is the last time. A major piece like this will be separate. There will always be those incidental matters that will come through a quarterly budget amendment, but something this significant, we would ask to do one step. I think we also have to look at the salary ordinance as well, I believe. And I don't know if there's anybody here that would have the answer. There are other matters as well, and since that was coming up at the next meeting, I thought that was close enough. But I think in the future, we could also be abandoning the salary ordinance. But thank you for the suggestion.
Great. Good questions. Any other questions, councilmembers? Okay, I'm going to ask if there is a motion. Councilmember Marts?
I move to approve funding for one full-time equivalent FTE, Behavioral Health Coordinator position, and one FTE Behavioral Health Coordinator supervisory position utilizing the 0.1% affordable housing sales tax revenue funds from House Bill 1590, with the purpose of creating a co-responder behavioral health program and direct the Human Resources Director to revise the salary ordinance to add the new classification for the Behavioral Health Supervisor position and direct the chief financial officer to add $200,000 in general fund expenditures in 2023 as part of a future budget amendment, as well as to incorporate the 2024 budget amendments as part of the mid-biennium budget update anticipated for this fall.
Second.
Fantastic. The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any council discussion?
I would love to speak to my motion.
Fantastic. We'll start with you.
This program has been wildly successful. I just want to take everybody back a few years. You know, we had a huge community concern about oversight of public safety. And we did a number of things during that time to try to think a little differently, to provide, to continue to provide core police services, but to also think outside the box. And in the spirit of that, came up with this program. And it is just been... and it is just been incredibly successful. There was skepticism, I would say, that I heard initially among IPD because there was concern that we were going to replace them with counselors, as they put it. But they, they love this position and the folks who have been in this position. They view it as a multiplier. They view it as a better way to engage in the community. And so I am just thrilled that we are expanding the program here tonight and will just joyously support this measure. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I, as the secondor, I would also support this program. I think it's right-sized and specialized. So by right-sized, I mean that we didn't decide to go to a full 24-hour model because it wasn't necessary yet. The way that we were tracking the cases and the way that the need was coming to our counselors and Police Department, it didn't make sense to have a 24-hour model. But to have a model that is specialized in the sense that you have the counselors that are on the night duty handling that immediate intervention and then the day-duty people are handling the referrals and the relationships with the nonprofits that provide the services. So I believe this is right-sized and specialized in a way that fits Issaquah and continues to show that we are a leader in Human Services in our community. It's what we hear when we go to the Eastside Human Services Committee, when we go to other regional committees. We just hear accolades about how Issaquah is really doing a great job in Human Services and that's quite a credit to our staff and our director and the spirit of Issaquah that we heard in our comments tonight. So I wholeheartedly approve this motion.
Fantastic. Councilmember DeMichele, I'm going to go to you next.
Thank you, Council President Walsh. I do want to take this opportunity to echo what my fellow councilmembers have said. I appreciate the pace of growth of this, of this program or the, of the response to the need in our community. I think it is a great, great example of how we use data to shape a program because going into it, we didn't know exactly what the need was. And as we have proceeded, we have learned over and over again that the need is much greater than we originally anticipated. And I really want to commend the staff for using the data that, except for example, the information we received tonight and use that data to help shape a really, really effective program. And so I can't thank the staff enough. We have succeeded here in Issaquah where others have failed spectacularly and also where others, such as that big city to the west of us, can't seem to even start. And we have plunged in, not knowing every answer, not knowing everything that we needed to know. We've learned as we've gone and, and out of that has come a really stellar response to the needs in our community. So thank you to the staff and I will obviously be supporting the motion. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Deputy Council President Hall.
Thank you. I just wanted to, first and foremost, can't begin tonight's comments without saying Monica to you and to Director Watling and everyone in the Human Services Division. First and foremost, we rely on the work that you do so much and every single member of the community here in Issaquah. And every time that you come before us with a proposal, it is collected, it is intelligent, it is well put together, it is excellent in every sense of the word. So first and foremost, I just want to thank you for everything you do and for making our job easy up here on the dais at times, all the time. Second, Councilmember DeMichele brought up that the need exceeds, you know, our capacity to do good. I was really struck by some of the data that's in here, so I wanted to highlight some of it. In particular, your emphasis of the need for really intensive case management services to support the transition for these individuals and to prevent re-entering homelessness again and being trapped in the cycle. And I had thought some of the data that you had covered in here was really compelling. 7,000 to 10,000 Police Department calls a year that involve some element of behavioral health. You walked us through that chart a little bit, too. Two to three weeks of assistance for folks with moderate needs who just need some assistance navigating the systems that are in place for supports. Two to three years of assistance for folks with high needs and can't navigate the system alone. These people can't navigate the system alone. And we are providing a service to help them do it and re-enter a transition out of homelessness, out of high needs in behavioral health. And we should just feel very good about the work that we're doing here. It is dignified and it is worth every dollar that we put into it. So again, thank you for that. I also just want to say, you know, currently I saw that there are 103, 131 people in our database and many of them are still inactive as well. Meaning we're either staff capacity or we're trying to reach out and we haven't heard back. So this added capacity will be able, will help us get those people over to active status. So then we can graduate them out of the program as well. So I really appreciate that this proposal creates this new capacity for a co-response model, but also emphasizes and maintains our emphasis on case management. And it's definitely a balanced approach to, you know, address the problem, also then study the other elements of the problem we don't understand fully to analyze whether or not 24/7 coverage makes sense in the future. So once again, excellent work and I'll be supporting the motion.
Councilmember Hutton?
Thank you, I'll be brief. I agree with my colleagues that have spoken before me on the importance of this program and particularly on it being a multiplier, as Councilmember Marts said. I think it, this program allows us to address more of the needs that our community has in behavioral health space and mental health space than either the Issaquah Police Department could address on their own or the Behavioral Health Department could, or the Human Services Department could address on their own. So I am fully supportive and I look forward to more conversations as we see how this program progresses as far as whether there is a need for that 24/7 component. I look forward to continuing seeing the data on that and I'm fully supportive of the step we're taking tonight.
I don't think my councilmembers left me anything else to praise other than plus one, plus one. I mean, we really are blessed by the way that this program has progressed. We are blessed by the fact that it's because there is so much need out there, but we're being responsive to that. And so I just, I really appreciate all that we have done as a collective city to address this. So if there is no further discussion, the motion for the council is to approve funding for one full-time equivalent FTE Behavioral Health Coordinator Position and one FTE Behavioral Health Coordinator Supervisor Position utilizing the 0.1% Affordable Housing Sales Tax Revenue Funds, HB 1590, with the purpose of creating a co-responder Behavioral Health Program and direct the Human Resources Director to revise the salary ordinance to add the new classification for the Behavioral Health Supervisor Position and direct the Chief Financial Officer to add $200,000 in general fund expenditures in 2023 as part of a future budget amendment, as well as to incorporate the 2024 budget adjustments as part of the mid-biennium budget update anticipated for this fall. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you, Monica. The next item of business is ID 1460, Police, Court, and City Hall Planning Future Options. In this one, I know this is a regular meeting, but we are not actually giving a vote on this. This is carried over from the May 22nd City Council Committee of the Whole. So we're really looking to treat this portion of the meeting similar to that in that we're trying to provide feedback, so we'll have a little bit more discussion at that point. So I would like to invite Administrative Services Director Autumn Monahan and Chief Financial Officer Robert Hamud to present this item.
Hi again, Autumn Monahan, Administrative Services Director. I'm here with CFO Robert Hamud tonight to talk about Police, Court, and City Hall Planning Future Options and Funding. So purpose of tonight's presentation is to provide follow-up from the May, May 8th Committee of the Whole meeting. Provide some further analysis on City Hall space.
Autumn, let me give you just a moment. Can you change the presentation up there in case? We weren't, your screen may be small on your side, but it was really small on our side. Okay, thanks.
All right, also provide some further analysis on City Hall space and revenue options. Receive City Council's feedback and then review some next steps. So the direction needed tonight is threefold. The first is, should public safety facility investments for Issaquah Police renovating 130 East Sunset Way, municipal court building a new facility in close proximity to police, and City Hall either building an Old Town campus or purchasing and renovating an existing building be included in the capital improvement plan? Administration's recommending Attachment A, which is in your packet, which is a new page that would be included in the CIP for adoption on June 26th. It's important to note here that that page includes both City Hall options in that it's both building a campus in Old Town or purchasing and renovating an existing building. The estimated amount is the amount you've seen before that we've talked through building in Old Town. We selected the more expensive option, knowing that this is just a plan. And as we continue to refine and really look at options, we can always update the CIP at a later date. So that's the first item. The second is, should the city start the surplus process for City Hall Northwest with proceeds to go towards facility needs? And administration is recommending to start that process. As we've discussed a few times already, we do have concerns with the existing condition of City Hall Northwest and the location is also not very ideal or accessible for our community. So we have a new surplus policy that the council adopted earlier this year that has very specific criteria and a process for assessing whether a property is ready for surplus. So the recommendation is that the administration start that process, try out our new criteria and our new policy and come back to council with a further recommendation. And then the third is, what other information does the City Council need regarding a public safety levy lift, bond vote, or the public safety sales tax? And does council have a preferred revenue option? A quick recap of our last meeting, there was general support to further assess two of the options for City Hall space. Option one, or I'm sorry, Option A is building a municipal campus in Old Town or Option B is the renovating and purchasing an existing building. And then revenue options were also presented, including the levy lid lift for public safety, the voter-approved bond, or the public safety sales tax. A quick note that there were no questions at the last meeting about the sales tax, so there's no additional information in the presentation tonight. Just to follow up on a few questions that we heard from councilmembers at previous meetings. One was around parking and whether the required parking that we were first presenting, how that compared to actual use for our spaces. And so our city's current parking requirements do factor in typical use of both employees and customers based on square footage. However, if the Old Town Plan, planning process continues, administration recommends conducting a full transportation demand study. There are 300 parking spaces located near city properties here in Old Town. A significant portion could count toward a full campus parking plan, but we've also built this campus over many decades and it's time to assess that. Also, there were questions-
We have a question there from Councilmember Marts.
Yeah, well, yeah, I'm going to hold just for a minute or two. I see you're moving to a slide that has to do with timelines. So I have questions about timelines, but I'll wait to your presentation.
Next, there were some questions at the last meeting about just general timelines for both Option A or Option B. So we worked with our consultant, the Stowe team, just to do some, just some general estimates of how much time would be required for each option. So building a municipal campus in Old Town would take probably about a year for the architecture, engineering, and design and about two years, up to two years for construction versus Option B of purchasing and renovating an existing building in Issaquah would probably take about nine months in the planning process and another nine months for construction before it was move-in-ready.
Now, do you have a question?
Now I do have a question.
Yeah.
Help me understand the timing of finding an option and deciding on an option versus funding an option? Because it seems like there's a real spread on potential cost and that could potentially impact, you know, people's perception on what the best funding mechanism would be. And, you know, part of me would rather figure out what we wanted to do and then figure out how to pay for it, rather than saying, we'll figure out how to pay for it and then figure out what we want. So can you, can you talk about the timing of those decisions and they, how does that have to work?
Yes, so tonight, tonight we're, our recommendation is that both options are included in the CIP and that we have a bit more time to assess both options, A and B, and come back with some further detail, both on the viability of building in Old Town and on, I have another slide here in a bit about, you know, there are about 20 existing properties that fit our needs for City Hall and so letting us have some time to do that due diligence will, I think, help in narrowing down those options so that we do have that, you know, whatever the goal is and then work toward funding toward that.
Yeah, so when the, when the time comes, assuming we decide something that we want to do, do we have to, can we decide what we want to do before we decide how we want to fund it?
Yes.
Okay, because I'm seeing a preferred revenue, you know, does council have a preferred revenue option? And without knowing, you know, whether it's $15 million or $50 million, that, that would have an impact on my personal preferred revenue.
And I think administration's looking tonight for, are there other questions you have around any of those revenue options? Is there more information that we can come back to you with in the future?
That's the first sentence of that bullet item. But the second sentence is, does council have a preferred revenue option? So I just wanted to make sure I understood whether that was required at this point. And what I'm hearing is that it's not required at this point. Thank you.
No.
I'm seeing lots of head shaking, saying, no, it is not required. Deputy Council President Hall.
Well, and building off that, remind me if I got this right from a previous meeting, but we essentially need to be able to find eight to nine million dollars of revenue a year to pay off debt. Is that right, or bonding, is that right?
Councilmember Hall, back to Councilmember Marts' point, it also depends on the options you choose. So that was the higher end is what we're talking about.
Of the city, yes.
And we're going to go through this again tonight.
Okay, go ahead.
Great, just a few other answers to other questions. One was around demolition costs and had we included those in our estimates? We had not. So if there were options that would require the demolition of City Hall South, here are the cost estimates. They, then there's the added cost on that right-hand column if asbestos is included and we're not clear on that for either building. And then also for Fire Station 71, if that was an option. Another question about whether Fire Station 71 site would accommodate a one-story subgrade garage? The answer is yes. The water table is on average 30 feet below ground at that southern edge of Veterans Memorial Field adjacent to City Hall. There were some questions around customer traffic. We mined some data to share with you. The first is, for much of 2022, our main permit counter, which services the permit center customers, many police customers and utility billing averaged about six to seven walk-in customers per day. That doesn't include pushing the button at PD also to.
Oh, Councilmember DeMichele, do you have a question?
Oh, thanks. Autumn, going back to the, I think, the previous slide about the underground garage. You said you looked at that for the area around Fire District 71. What about, have we looked at a possibility of underground garage on the south side of Sunset or anyplace else? Or is it just that one location that we've looked at for an underground garage?
So far, we just looked at that one location, but we can look at others, too.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. All right, so back to customer traffic, six to seven customers per day. That doesn't include those that ring the bell at PD, so there's another option there. But that's typical traffic at the bottom floor of City Hall. And then we asked court to also start tallying customers and so in example of a recent week, they had 20 walk-in customers. There was also questions about what other properties the city owns that could be used for revenue besides City Hall Northwest. As you know, our property use varies quite widely. I included in your packet a list of all King, or I'm sorry, of all City of Issaquah properties and then the King County assessed value, which I should know- and then the King County assessed value, which I should note is typically much lower than market value. And also, important to note is we are just now starting a facility condition assessment, which we're quite excited by, and that will give us a really good baseline on the status of all of our buildings and any deferred maintenance or maintenance moving forward that's needed. There was also a question around this slide or this chart that was assessing Option A and Option B and how they would align to our project goals. And these were categorized by likely, somewhat likely, and not likely, and there were some questions for a bit more detail on that. So just briefly, both Option A and B do ensure safety, so they would likely provide police and court adequate facilities for modern safety standards. As far as stewarding public dollars, Option A would have more upfront costs, while Option B would have less upfront costs. As far as customer service, Option A in Old Town would likely be adjacent to other civic services. We have many other services here in Old Town and located where people choose to gather and visit. Option B is unknown, so not likely to also be near other civic services, most of which are in Old Town, and unclear if the location be a place where people choose to gather and visit. As far as economic development, Old Town would likely retain the community's vibrancy here in downtown, while Option B would likely support community vibrancy elsewhere in the city. Both options would provide community amenities of accessible indoor or community meeting spaces, which we heard from the community at the very beginning of this project, and we did that survey, that finding indoor space is very difficult in town and how important that is to our community. And then environmental stewardship, so both can likely attain lead platinum or higher. I have been in touch with our sustainability team. They are very excited to assist, if needed, in assessing the potential climate impact of each option as we start drilling down and know more about these options. As I mentioned, there are about 20 existing buildings in Isaguat that would meet our space requirements for City Hall. This excludes the warehouse and industrial and most retail, but pursuing any kind of off-market opportunity could take a significant amount of time. And with that, I'll hand it over to our CFO to cover some of the revenue.
In the next slide, we were talking about the general levy lid lift, and this is one of the options that was presented to the MNI Committee in May. And also, we did mention this option as well at the retreat earlier this year with the city council. The lid lift would focus, at least the proposal here would be a general public safety or lid lift. This scenario is focused on public safety, but it's up to the council to determine the language of the lid lift and what type it would be. It would be subject to voter approval, either the primary or the general elections, and it's a 50-plus 1% approval threshold. And debt for new facilities, and this is a key point to this, would actually be issued from the general fund. So you're growing the general fund, and then you're issuing debt independently of the vote for the levy lid lift. It would not be tied to the lid lift itself, it would be tied to the general fund. And then the property owners pay the excess amount based on the ballot initiative. East excess $100 levy generates approximately $1.34 million of revenue annually. Again, the $100 would be excess for an average household in Isaguat. The next option that was presented to the committee was a voter-approved bonds. So this is a little different than the levy lid lift where voters are seeking approval for a specific project, for specific, or a list of projects issued on a bond with a bond issuance. And the difference is this must be at a 60-plus 1% threshold, and you can see below there's some other qualifications based on previous voter turnouts for approval of these bonds. And if it passes, it can cover the entire amount of the issuance of facilities and infrastructure or anything else that's attached to that bond issue that's also in the language of the ballot initiative. And a tax levy would sunset after 20 years, if you're going for 20 years. You could do 25 years, 30 years, but if we're looking at a 20-year levy with sunset after that period. And again, the average impacted property owner just depends on what the total amount of the bonds that you're issuing. And so we wanted to just show this slide. We showed this during the property tax presentation last year, and this slide, we're just, did you have a question?
Yes, we have a question, thank you.
I have a question, and I'm gonna see if you can guess what my question is. Councilmatic bonding authority. Why, why do we not have that listed as one of our options, given that our immense councilmatic bonding authority?
So immense councilmatic bonding authority, one of the, one of the key components of is supporting it with the general fund. And so right now, as far as what scenarios and looking at the cost of all three facilities that we're looking at, it's been determined that at least what we're looking at on the surface, we do not have that ability to guarantee the debt service for a long period of time, based on those three facilities, we're like, police, fire.
I'm, I'm surprised to you say that, because when I started on council many years ago, we had a much higher councilmatic debt as a fraction of our, of our general fund, and that was just fine, and we had no problems, and we managed to get AAA rating despite having a significantly higher councilmatic bond than we have currently. I, I would suggest that respectfully, this is a council policy-level decision to have a conversation about whether to be councilmatic or not. And I, I believe it should be considered. I'm not necessarily saying I'm in favor, because I get, it just, it just goes to the bottom line, and whatever, whatever you fund, you just have to immediately start paying for. I get it. But I do believe it's something we should understand as it compares to other funding mechanisms. Thank you.
And I can, I can, I'm gonna mention just what the difference is at the end of this too, to answer Councilmember Mertz's comments. The levy lid lift, it can be placed on any ballot measure, requires a 50.1% approval. Revenue generated would increase 1% annually, so it does include the 1% that council would pass annually on the base, it would also go to the excess, and also newly assessed properties would be part of that property tax you're collecting. There's no sunset date on the new revenues, and it cannot be used directly for the issuance of bonds. If it was, it's limited to a nine-year collection period for bonds. And so the voter-approved levy, again, would extend through the repayment schedule of the bonds, as I talked about. One of the cons are it's harder to pass. And again, the other option as far as just going councilmatic general obligation bond, that's still in the full faith and credit of the general fund, meaning that obligation would be higher than anybody, anything else. So if it's competing with service levels, the bond repayment would be first, otherwise you're jeopardizing the credit rating and the full faith and credit of the city. So that would be the, the difference with just issuing directly from the general fund. And so property taxes, I just wanted to show this chart again, that nine cents of every dollar an average taxpayer pays in the City of Isaguat for property taxes actually goes back to the city. This is something where, again, we talk about limited revenues that the city collects compared to the other pots, and it's actually going down now with the mental health levy increase that has an average impact, I believe, about $116 to $120 per homeowner. So that nine cents will actually drop a bit when that's enacted. And so you can see that we don't collect, you know, we collect less than 10%, less than 10 cents of what you're getting for every dollar. And so the next one here is the estimated debt cost by facility, and I know there's a question earlier about this. This is kind of the menu of options, so to speak. You can see the fire station cost upfront, the fire station is already in the capital improvement program. Fire station relocation, estimated cost $32 million. You could see that going over. That debt service alone, $2.8 million. About a $211 average impacted property tax owner, we're assuming the house assessed at about $1.1 million of value. Police and court, and again, that's the police renovations, and a new court facility adjacent to it would be the $19 million estimated debt service for, for that upgrade, plus the new building would be $1.6 million, that $120 impact to a tax homeowner. And then you see the Option A that was discussed earlier by Autumn, that was 45 to 49 millions, that range, that's about a 3 to 3.3 million. We're assuming a 5% interest rate, by the way. And the average impact, you could see 225 to 250, and then the Option B is less the purchase and renovate option, which would be 17 to 28 on the range that we're looking at right now, 0.7 to 1.5 if you were to issue debt for.
We have a question from Councilmember Mertz.
What, what would be the components of the $10 to $15 million city cash contribution?
So the city cash contribution assumes surplusing of city properties, including City Hall Northwest, as discussed, and also mitigation fund proceeds that we have from Lakeside, I believe, which is just under $5 million.
Thank you.
And I actually have a question. Can you talk through the estimated annual debt service? Let's just choose Option A for an example, what that would be, what that means if we were to go for those general obligation councilmatic bonds, what that would cost us each year? I assume adding those three items up would be our cost every year. So we could either choose to pay for it directly out of general fund if we were gonna go the councilmatic bond route, or if we were looking at the, one of the versions of a levy that would be based on property tax, which is what is estimated in the column three.
Right, so that would be, so the councilmatic, if there was no tax option, would just be, would be zero average impact, but that debt service number is still there. So the city would have to obviously come up with that debt service number without that property tax impact. And, and just to be clear again, on the lid lift option, that's just to increase the general fund, so the bond itself is not, it would be the same issuance that you would do if it was councilmatic, because it would be a councilmatic issue.
Yes, yeah, okay. Continue, thank you.
And back to Councilmember Hall's question earlier, when he mentioned the total debt service, that was the all-in cost adding Option A, police and court and fire, that was our, at least the ranges we're looking at right now, that would be the average, the hall, the all-in cost, the highest debt service really. So comparison of the city levies, so again, if we're looking at property tax levies for home value at a 1.1 million, we're actually in the low end of the comparisons with other communities right here. You can see Snoqualmie and Sammamish are the higher ends, because they're more property tax dependent, so they use lid lifts more than other cities around them. But even Bellevue's use the lid lift, Sammamish has, or Redmond has, Kirkland has, so we are lower right now. You're looking at about $777 compared to, obviously, the most extreme case here, Snoqualmie, $1,606.
So in closing, here's some next steps. June 26th, the city council will be voting on the adoption of the 2024, 2029 CIP. From July to September, administration will continue assessing both of those City Hall options we discussed tonight, as well as the funding tools. And findings will then be presented in September for city council's further review and direction. By August, administration would return with a staff report analysis on the potential surplus of City Hall Northwest for city council consideration and potential action. And then in October to December, depending on how the assessment goes, we could do some potential public engagement to begin helping to refine the project even further. With that, we're here to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions that weren't asked during the presentation? Okay, we'll start with Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you. Thank you for providing the information about the other city properties assessments. I wondered if we're gonna have the information from the study that is gonna be done in terms of what could potentially be surplus in time to consider that with the other options that we would have. Basically, a question about the timing, when we expect to get that information back, and how could it fit into our process?
Good question. So our assessment is, will be underway very soon with the goal that it's done by end of year. So, you know, we could wait a few more months if that was a decision point for council that would be needed as far as assessing other properties for potential revenue.
Let me clarify, just so I make sure. Are you talking about just the surplus report for City Hall Northwest or a report on all of the facilities?
A report on all of the facilities.
Okay.
But we are looking for direction. We believe that we should move forward now with the process for City Hall Northwest, that would be front of the line.
Okay, so we, one of the things we're gonna do here is provide feedback over whether we're ready to start that process, but then we have already in the works kind of this idea that we're going to work on, understanding what the maintenance and costs and requirements are for all of our facilities.
Yes, we, we won't have a recommendation on, say, which properties on that list should be surplus, or what, you know, what the next steps are for those properties. It's step one, embed understanding each of our properties and what their needs are in the long term, just to help us start better budgeting for, for maintenance for our facilities.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? I know you were waiting for it. I'm waiting for you, go ahead.
Do you think there's any, I asked you this over email, and I'm, I'm just curious if you think there's any value in having a second page, just for transparency's sake? Maybe not within the CIP, but as an attachment or addendum that shows what Option B would look like as a page, just for the community's sake? Or do you think there would be more confusion to it?
We are, you know, we approached this in one page. We had a lot of discussion around this, too. We approached it with one page in that it is one project, and so showing it that way in the CIP, and went for the, the highest amount, again, for planning purposes only, knowing that we'll be doing more assessment around it. I did include Option B in the description that said that City Hall would be either Option A or Option B, so that, that is listed in the description.
Okay, and I see Councilmember De Michelle, you've got your hand up. Do you have a question?
A question following up on Councilmember Hall, Hall's comment, because I am, I'm really concerned about the messaging that we give to the public. We say that we're gonna have a public outreach, and yet it looks like we've settled on an option when we look at that page. And I'm just thinking about something as simple as saying two options for, you know, in the headline, just change the headline to two options for, and then the rest of the headline. And what I'm, I'm just wondering if that wouldn't solve our problem, but also send the message that we have not made a final decision. You know, we, we all know, staff knows, and the council knows how to read those CIP pages, but I think that the general public, just looking at that page, would go, oh, they've already decided, and there's no guarantee that they're going to read the rest of the description. So I have the, I just want to say that I have the concern that Councilmember Hall has that we're sending the wrong message with that CIP page.
And we can definitely work to update the title and even make it, the description a bit more clear, if you really want to reiterate that there are two options, decisions not been made, and a range of costs that varies greatly. Okay.
Okay, so I think I'm gonna use that as a jumping off point for discussion. So the way I see it, there's kind of, I mean, there's definitely the three questions they need for direction. The first is, you know, should we have something in the CIP? The second is, should we start the surplus process for City Hall Northwest? And the third is talking about financing. So I'm wondering, can we get into any of these comments or questions or direction on the CIP and then just go down the line?
Anybody wanna start it off? Councilmember Hunt?
As far as the CIP, I am very interested in Option B. It saves the community a lot of money, and so I think it does send a more clear message that both of these options are still on the table to have the range, as you were just suggesting, and to put them sort of on equal, equal footing in the CIP page. That would also make it easier for me to support. I think since it's a planning document, if we're planning for the highest expenditure option, it looks like we did. We are planning for that, and that's not yet the case. Thanks.
Councilmember De Michelle?
Councilmember De Michele?
Thanks, yes, Councilmember Hunt actually just said what, what I was going to say, so, are we just commenting on each one separately, and then, and then going to the next one, or are we commenting on all three?
I was going to stick to one, and we'll just get through them each and be done.
Okay, that, that is all I had to say, then. I do support putting this in the CIP, as long as we are showing that there are still two options on the table.
Okay. Anyone else? Yeah, if you just want a thumbs up, agree.
Yeah, we'll just give a thumbs up, should be in the CIP, as clear as we can make it, so the citizens know what we are considering. Thank you.
Yes.
Agreed. Okay, fantastic. Next question, should we start the surplus process for City Hall Northwest? Councilmember Mars?
Yes.
Councilmember Joe?
Yes, it should have been done, oh, a little while ago, not years and years ago, but a little while ago. But I've only been on the council for a year and a half in the second, in the second swing, so I can't criticize.
Fantastic. Anyone have any different feedback? Councilmember Hunt?
Well, I, I agree that it should be surplus. I also would like to explore if there's a way to get more information about other things that we might consider surplusing, other properties. It sounds like that time, the timeline for the study that is really looking at maintenance is not going to line up with our decision-making process, and so that would be a concern, because I do think we're asking, or we're contemplating a very expensive project here, and so we should, you know, have our due diligence on all the other options that we could use to fund this as a city, including looking at what other properties we could surplus.
Council President, members of the council, we agree, and I think what we're trying to say is that we want to respect the process that the council has articulated for surplusing. We want to make sure that that first step about maintenance and viability is taken care of. With that said, we agree, we would like to move forward, we would like to surplus those properties that you ultimately feel are no longer necessary, and we would like to do it, so those proceeds could be used toward the projects you're talking about this evening. We want to be respectful of the process. City Hall Northwest is sort of the, you know, the front of the line, and the bill, we have worked diligently. City Clerk Tisha Geezer has practically moved into City Hall Northwest, since it's been vacated of other staff. It, it is a major undertaking that she has led to digitize all those records. We are finally at the point where we feel we can walk out and shut the door behind us, and we don't want to spend any more time with that building there. But Councilmember Hunt, we hear you, we agree with you, but we also want to respect the process, so the community has an opportunity to weigh in. Various city properties have various uses, some are community-focused, some aren't. We want to go through all that, but we're going to do it as diligently as we can, so that once you decide what you're willing to sell, we can sell it and put the money toward these other projects.
So, let me expand on some of that. When do we need to make a decision about our financing options, and how does that relate to when this facility maintenance report will be available?
Council President Walsh, you do not have to make a decision immediately on the finances, you can go through the process, obviously make the recommendation, finalize what building, what options you want to do first, and then, we haven't even talked about timing of, if, if you were to go to voters, what the timing would be, or even the timing if you're going to issue bonds from general obligation. So, that is open at this point.
Okay, and a follow-up question, if we decided to go with one of the financing options, and then, at some point in the next year or something, we decided to surplus and sell a property, what effect would that have, and is it different depending on the different financing options?
Do you mean after you've issued the bonds?
Either after we've issued, or after we've put together a campaign and, you know, proposed it to voters.
That's a very good question. In terms of a levy, you could, I mean, one of the options you could take, councilmaticly, for example, without having to go back to voters to reverse, you could actually do, not take the 1%, for example, on that excess, so you could, you could cap it so it doesn't grow. You could also repay the loans earlier, so that it retires earlier, so there's, there's several options you could do to address it.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other commentary? I guess I will also put my thumbs up on surplusing City Hall Northwest.
Surplus.
Right, going through it. Question number three, what other information does the city council need regarding any of the financing options, and do we have a preferred revenue option? Councilmember Mer?
Well, I don't really, I mean, I actually have a question about something else in here, and I, I just realized there isn't a good forum, it's not, it's not in any of these three questions specifically, but it's really around additional information that I would need, not around the financing side, but around the Old Town Campus versus purchase/renovate. Can I, can I say what additional information I would need around that? So, I look at this alignment to goals slide, which is basically a red, yellow, green trade study, and trade studies are catnip to engineers, it's, it's kind of our favorite thing. I, I'm skeptical that, the, the one under customer service, I'm skeptical that purchase/renovate is a lot worse than Old Town Municipal Campus, not likely located near other civic services. We have a lot of different civic services in the city, and some of them are located around here, and others are located elsewhere. So, it's not obvious to me that doing something Old Town, if you had something, someplace else that was near recreational facilities, that had better parking options, it's not at all clear to me that that would be worse customer service. And then the second thing is a point that I brought up at a previous council meeting, and it really has to do with this sort of era that we find ourselves in, and I'm a worrywart, but it's the issue of security, and there are different, there are different assessment levels of regional security for different locations in the city, having to do with regional infrastructure. And so, one of the factors that I would want to know in a decision on a property is, for lack of a better word, is it a target? And it's unfortunate that we live in an era where we have to think of such things, but it's our job to think of such things, and so that would be a current of mine. I don't have a, any, any question, additional question around the financing side. Again, I want to know how much money we're thinking about, and that will help me make a decision, and of course, I have been on record for a very long time saying we should at least have councilmatic authority on the, in the mix.
Okay, I'm going to go to Councilmember De Michele next.
Thank you. I have a question and a comment, I guess, on the first part, and then I'll get to the actual question. Who, are we deciding what revenue source we'll go with this project? Or are we asking our community to help us make that decision when we go out for community outreach? And I guess that's a question for City Administrator Bob Kowits, but I'm a little bit confused. What exactly would we be putting in front of the public when we go out to the public? Is it just the construction plans, or is it, you know, what are we asking people to do?
Councilmember De Michele, members of the council, we're asking them all, and I think we've been very diligent in the questions we have brought before you over the last few months, largely to eliminate things that you would like to eliminate. So, on the funding side, if there was anything that you felt was not something that was worthy of additional discussion, we'd like to hear that. I think what we're hearing tonight is, yeah, let's keep talking about all of these things, let's get the community's input, and that's perfectly fine. But we wanted, before we start that exercise, wanted to ask the council if there was anything you basically wanted to take off the table. You know, I think we've talked about sales taxes, I think the administration's sense is that that, if not off the table, is a very low priority at this point, and so we will look at, at debt, we will look at levy lifts, we'll explore those, we'll talk with the community about that, but perhaps sales tax is not on the top of the list, and looking at your colleagues, I think that's a fair assessment. So, that's very helpful to us. We don't want to spend a lot of time talking about the ins and outs of sales tax, if ultimately the council's not in favor of that. What I'm hearing the council say is that other types of debt, other types of levy lift, let's keep talking, let's keep sharing information, so we would, our plan would be to go to the community in the fall, as we talk about this, not only to talk about options for facilities, but also talk about options of how it would be, would be constructed, and that also deals with surplus property, that the sale of those properties, City Hall Northwest and whatever else may come along, has a material impact on the costs of these projects.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that explanation, then. I think what I would like to see in, at some point in this process, is a nifty little chart with all the pros and cons of each of the different revenue sources, in a way that anybody could look at it and see all of the pros, all the cons for the, the options that we're looking at, and that we can explain to the public, and that we will understand. And I don't think that would be hard to put together, but I just think it's something that I haven't, I haven't seen, I think, to my satisfaction quite yet. The other thing I wanted to bring up is, we've talked about the police, you know, the police department and their needs, and the municipal court, but I'm wondering also, as part of this getting ready to go out to the public, if we shouldn't also be talking about what are the human services needs, what are the facility needs for human services? And I'm thinking particularly about the conversation that was held earlier tonight, and the public input that we, we had. I've been talking to some of the folks that deliver food to the meals program, and conversations around, why doesn't the city have a, an industrial kitchen, for example? I think at some point, we have to face the fact that that building where the community meals are being produced is really not up to, not up to the job of, of doing that much longer, that is not an industrial kitchen, as I understand it, and so, that raises the even larger question of, if we're planning for police, we're planning for administration, we're planning, we're planning for the courts, what are we planning for human services, and shouldn't that be part of what's on the table, when, by the time that we go out to the public? So, I know that's a big question to throw on the table, but I, I think at this point, especially after listening to all the dialogue earlier tonight, I think it's a question that we, we need to include in our planning for facilities. So, those will be the two things that I think I'd like more information about. Thanks.
And I'm just going to follow up on that before I move on. I know we had gotten an email from you, Autumn, I believe it was Deputy Council President Hall's question about how, how we could go about seeking input from residents and businesses about this, and particularly, what's the difference in us trying to get input on plans versus financing? So, can you talk about some of those limitations?
Sure, there, so, it's going to require us a little more research and time to better understand what things we can be asking the community versus not, in case some of these things do reach a ballot measure at some point, and so, that'll be step one, and so we'll, we'll get back to you sooner rather than later with more feedback. We have a few questions out already, and are doing some research around that for better clarity.
Thanks. Okay, Deputy Council President Hall, if you can take your fingers off the keyboard and talk.
Thank you very much, and thanks again for letting us push this item from our last, much earlier in the evening than it was then, well, actually, not that much earlier, I look at it. Okay, so, a couple things. First, as the city administrator said, I agree that I think we should take the public safety sales tax off the table. We recently adopted the affordable housing sales tax, we're now considering whether to implement a new transportation benefit sales tax, so I think it would be prudent of us to take that off the table. We're researching what's, I appreciate your answer to count, to my email and Councilmember Walsh's, or Council President Walsh's question there, so we're still researching kind of what's appropriate in terms of how we're interacting with the public. I do want to just say, like, this would be my dream, then, is that, would love to have first council input on how we're going to engage with the community, with residents and businesses, because I think, as Councilmember De Michele alluded to, being able to tell the why story is very, very crucial, I think. Balancing our capital needs with cost of living, that bubbled up as an issue of great importance to the community in our, our community survey, but also, all this incredible work of the Capital Finance Community Task Force has, has demonstrated that we have clear infrastructure needs that are not being met by our current revenues, so we have to find a balance there, and that's a story, that's storytelling. I'm wondering if it would be possible to do some sort of series of open houses, have a webpage that has some video of the why, that also has a survey, that we're kind of collecting feedback from residents, but I'm wondering if these kinds of initiatives are possible, number one, and if we're able to do that in a particular timeframe. I guess the other question when it comes to revenue options for me is, to sunset or not to sunset? I want to get a better sense, first and foremost, of what our ongoing and future needs are in facilities, in police and fire, because that would kind of tell me whether or not sunsetting or not sunsetting is appropriate. If it's not, if we don't have a lot of needs that outpace our capacity beyond some of these kind of major initiatives that we're going through over the next 10 to 20 years, it seems like it would be more appropriate to the community to have something that does sunset. That's kind of an initial impression that I have, but again, I'd like to get into that a little bit more as we continue down this path. Yeah, I have, thank you for all your work on this.
Anybody else? Okay, so, I am still having trouble with the idea of making financial decisions when, I mean, personally, I haven't had the conversation about the EBD sales tax until tomorrow, but also, I know we had this previous conversation about potentially a parks district, and so, it would be really helpful for me if we could just understand what the options are out there, and what timeframe, again, we're talking about each of those, and how they all collectively add up at a certain point. So, if we adopt all three of those, at some point, somebody's going to be paying X more than they currently are, because we aren't making decisions in a vacuum, even though all of these things are needed. So, having an understanding of that would be super helpful. Having detailed more on that timeline of what the maintenance report is going to be compared to when these decisions are going to happen, and also filtered in there on that timeline, when we would go to community for engagement, and then, at the kind of end of that timeline, I'd like to see how that time compares to when we would be doing either build or buy and occupy, so that we really clearly have a full sense of what, what that timeline is. I'm also very interested in hearing more about a general obligation bond, and what the impacts of that potentially would be. I would probably preferably pair it with selling other property, because I think that's a large ask on our general fund, but I'm interested in knowing more about it, so that we can consider it as a possibility. I'll look to, yep, go ahead.
Well, and just real quick, I just want to acknowledge on camera, too, that it, it seems like we're probably going to have to do some of the, not just one. seems like we're probably going to have to do some of the, not just one, that correct assessment. So picking a revenue path plus surpassing property or having two revenue paths and surpassing cost of property? I mean, what's your, what's your sense, general sense about that?
Yes. What we propose here is the combination of the revenues, of the combination. So when we talk about surplusing property, we talk about existing fund balance or cash payments plus a bond issue of some kind.
Okay. I've asked the three questions. We've received the feedback. Do you have what you need?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. And so what's the next steps here that we can expect anything back? Because I know we've thrown a lot at you, you have a lot of research to do. So that timeline is June 26th for the CIP, but then July, okay. Fantastic. You've got all the answers for me. Much appreciated. Okay. So that's the end of our regular business. We've got committee and regional reports, starting with Councilmember Joe.
Thank you. Mayor Paulie and I had the privilege of representing Issaquah on May 30th at the Puget Sound Regional Council General Assembly. That was our first in-person meeting since COVID. At the meeting, we unanimously elected City of Paul's Bow, Paul's Bow Mayor Becky Eric as president and Sohomoish County Executive Dave Summers as vice president of the Regional Planning Agency. Also approved the budget and work plan for 2023. Cascade Water Alliance meetings are canceled. Both the Public Affairs Committee meeting on the 8th and the board meeting on the 28th have been canceled. The June member update from Cascade Water Alliance has been distributed to you in your email for your review. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember De Michelle, do you have a report?
Thank you, Council President Walsh. I do not have a report, other than Eastside Human Services Forum is meeting this Thursday and Eastside Transportation Partnership is meeting Friday morning. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. On May 18th, I attended a meeting of the Salmon Recovery Council of Wyra Eight, which is the name of our watershed. We had informational item about how salmon fared in funding from the last legislative session. One highlight of that is that the artificial lighting abatement proviso was funded at $300,000. And this is continuing the work that I have been doing with Representative Ramos, as well as the Salmon Recovery Council and King County Conservation District to reduce light pollution on Lake Sammamish. And so Issaquah is really leading in this area, especially with our Title 18 dock lighting ordinance. And we are, we are continuing that work, which is very important for salmon. We had one decision item, which was on grant round funding, and we approved funding for Issaquah Creek Instream Restoration at Lake Sammamish State Park Phase Two, as well as salmon, as well as for Greenway Education Program, Forests and Fins, which is a Mountains to Sound Greenway Program, which uses Issaquah Creek as a outdoor classroom. There were a number of other projects that were funded, but those were two that had Issaquah benefits specifically. And then I also wanted to mention that separate from that meeting, I did have an opportunity to tour the Laughing Jacobs Creek Land Restoration Project. This was a tour with David Kyle of Trout Unlimited, as well as Jim Bauer and Allison Agnes of King County Natural Resources Department. And so we toured the site where kokani spawn, kokani are a very special kind of salmon that spend their whole life cycle in Lake Sammamish and those neighboring streams. And this is a project that ultimately the city will participate in with other grant funding to restore these streams that are near Lake Sammamish. So that was very, very informational tour. And I have a number of photos and a bunch of really detailed plans, if anybody is interested in learning more about that project. The next meeting of the Salmon Recovery Council will be July 20th. And then I have one upcoming meeting, the Planning, Development and Environment Committee will meet tomorrow at June 6th. And we all have two items, ID 1402, which is amendments to Title 18 regarding diversity of housing, and ID 1320, which is the 2024 to 2029 capital improvement plan. That's it.
Just a few things. Councilmember Mer?
Thank you, Council President. Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee will be meeting online and virtually Wednesday, June 14th at 7:00 PM. No action is anticipated. Council Services Safety and Parks Committee met at 6:30 on Tuesday, May 16th. The only item we had was ID 1318, proposed 2024 to 2029 capital improvement plan, at which point we indicated support for the administration's position to prioritize park and trail projects in later years of the CIP. And there is no Council Services Safety and Parks Committee meeting for June. So this concludes my report.
Thank you. Deputy Council President Hall?
The Eastside Fire and Rescue Board of Directors is going to be meeting again this Thursday at 4:00 PM at our headquarters on Newport Way Northwest. We have a fairly light agenda this week, although we'll be recognizing the retirement of an engineer of 31 years in the force and also recognizing the promotion of three. Also, we'll be getting an update on our CORE Connect Program, if you're unfamiliar with that program. CORE stands for Community Outreach Resources and Education. This is our mobile integrated healthcare referral program within Eastside Fire and Rescue. So we'll be getting kind of an informational update on that, and we'll be sure to share that information out with you all. Thanks.
Great. Last week, I attended the Growth Management Policy Board, where we received a state legislative session review, including all kinds of details on what they're discovering about House Bill 1110, the missing middle housing bill, and how it relates to House Bill 1337, the ADU bill. Still lots of information coming. They were just trying to get a little bit out there from Department of Commerce. And then we also talked about comprehensive plans and how PSRC, the Puget Sound Regional Council, will be supporting plan review and all of the things to come there. And then the Affordable Housing Committee, the King County Affordable Housing Committee, will meet next Thursday in person at the PSRC building in Seattle. And that concludes my report there. Just a little bit for the mayor's report. There will be an executive session this evening to discuss collective bargaining per RCW 42.30.140 per N4. The item is expected to take approximately 15 minutes and no action is anticipated following open session. A few upcoming community events, Concerts on the Green. Every summer, Concerts on the Green presents free, family-friendly concerts in a beautiful outdoor setting on the Issaquah Community Center Green. The series starts in July and continues through the last Tuesday in August. Concerts run from 7:00 to 8:30 PM. Spectators often start gathering as soon as 6:00 PM for community picnicking. And you can purchase onsite concessions from the Cobanis Club of Issaquah. No alcohol or pets, please. Also, the Art Walk and Music Stroll on June 10th from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. Downtown Issaquah will have arts, culture and live music. Come join us and stroll through downtown to shop, dine and play. Event will be hosted by the Downtown Issaquah Association. The next item of business is good of the order. Yep. Deputy Council President?
Very quick, because I know we still have some stuff on the agenda tonight. I just wanted to take a quick point of personal privilege to thank Councilmember Hunt for your earlier motion today. We really don't get the chance to directly respond to citizens who come to comment about issues that they care about in these formats at all. And I thought he was very creative and showed a very great leadership and judgment on your part for kind of coming up with the idea to discard the norms for the evening so that we could respond to this in community that gives so much to our community. So I just wanted to give a lot of kudos to you.
Well, now my stuff's going to sound just banal and bland. I want, I have a few things I just want to make sure we've got on our calendars. There is a BlackBerry Park ribbon cutting, July 10th, 5:00 to 6:30 PM. The Summer Employee Recognition Event, July 20th, 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And the July Retreat was, has been rescheduled. We are no longer doing it on the Saturday, July 29th. We are now looking at the evening of July 24th, which is already a council meeting, but we didn't have a lot on the agenda, so we were going to utilize some of that. We're wondering if everybody's okay with doing a slightly early evening with dinner provided? So if you would catch me after the meeting or email with any preferences, let me know there. And I think that concludes, oh, I've got a few upcoming council meetings to notice. 6:30 PM on Monday, June 12th, the Special City Council Meeting. Agenda items include the 2024-2029 Capital Improvement Plan Public Hearing. At 7:00 PM on Monday, June 12th, the Committee of the Whole Council. Anticipated agenda items include also the 2024-2029 Capital Improvement Plan. And on Monday, June 26th, City Council Meeting. Note that this meeting is occurring one week later than normal, given the timing of the Association of Washington Cities Conference. And anticipated agenda items include the 2024 to 2029 Capital Improvement Plan adoption and the Storm and Surface Water Master Plan adoption. So next item of business is an executive session. So the city council will now recess into executive session to discuss collective bargaining per RCW 42.30.140 per N4. The item is expected to take approximately 15 minutes. No action is anticipated following open session. And please note, executive sessions are closed to the public. So we thank public for coming by. We will now recess into executive session at 9:41 PM.